Good evening. Today is Tuesday, May 17th at 6:00 PM. This is the Hanson Board of Selectmen's meeting. Please join with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under thy indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Weeks, do you mind reading this week's announcements?
Absolutely. This was a short one. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the newly revitalized Bylaw Review Committee. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website at www.hanson-ma.gov or by calling the Selectmen's office at 781-293-2131. And we have upcoming meetings, Board of Selectmen, May 24th, 2022, and Board of Selectmen meeting, June 14th, 2022.
Great, thank you very much. And one thing I will add is this Saturday is town elections being held down at the Hanson Middle School.
10:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
10:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Also absentee ballots are available if you contact the town clerk if you can't make it in person. And it said Hanson Middle.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kement. So with that being said, our first item on the agenda is the fireworks site discussion. Ms. Green?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Vice Chair, members of the board. As you know, the fireworks site has been an area that is located in mainly in Hanover, but there is some part of it located in Hanson. There's been some contamination there. That company Tetra Tech has been working to clean up the munitions. I never even knew what that meant until I met Mr. Riccio, and that is the residue remainder of ammunition that they had exploded and settled off at that site. There has, cleanup has been going on for a bit of time, but there have been some new developments that we thought was relevant and very important for the board to hear. And we do have Ron Minicio, who is the foreman of Tetra Tech, here to talk about the new developments.
Great. Do you mind taking the podium? Thank you.
I'd also like to introduce who's with me, Larry Cars, the program that is being remediated. It's the licensed site professional. So Larry is the licensed site professional record for the site. And Stephanie Goyat is one of our lead commenters. She's here to help answer any questions that may come later. As Lisa said, I'm going to do a little bit of just site introduction because I think there's people with different levels of familiarity. Give a little bit of an update of where things, what's going on right now. But probably more for you, what's coming up in the future that really is going to affect Hanson more. Because a lot of the work that's gone on so far has been in Hanover. So Heather, can you? So a real quick site overview, a little bit on the chronology of how the site came into the system and the cleanup started, all the characterization work and assessment work. The munitions response, part of the project, which is the cleanup of the explosive items and the residues from the explosive items that have leaked out into the environment. That's been going on for a couple of years now. I'll give you a quick snapshot of where that's at. Most of that is Hanover, so it's not in your backyard right at the moment. And then, but what will be happening in Hanson down the road is what's called the final remedy, and that's the cleanup of the ponds and streams. Where here are the ponds in Lower Factory Pond, Middle Factory Pond. It has some contaminated sediment, chemically contaminated sediment. And so I'll talk a little bit about what the current design, and it's still draft, we're working on that right now, what that looks like, what you guys will experience for the park that's in Hanson. And then we'll have a Q and A at the end, I guess, and I'm sure there'll be follow-up down the road. Heather? This is the site. I think most of you are familiar with it. It's an elongated site between Winter and King Streets. The Hanover, the Hanson portion is the little part below the yellow line down at the bottom left there. So you guys have, you know, private owners, and I think one town parcel is in that lower part down there. This picture that you can't really see is the, it was one of the best documents about the former facility. And it was a site plan from around 1968, but you can kind of see the same shape there. Just for context, the upper part where you see the buildings on that little sketch, that's where the production work went, the research and development, and the administration. The middle third of the site, you don't see much at all in there. That's on purpose. That's where they stored things so that in case they blew up, they wouldn't damage other things or set the other ones off. And then the bottom third of the site, which is where we've been doing the bulk of the work in the last four years, was disposal and the munitions testing. There was a test range down there, so they were shooting things to test them. And then when the facility closed, it's quite apparent that there was a lot of burial and dumping down there. So three pieces of the site, and a lot of the activity that we've been working on is in the bottom third. But the final remedy, there's chemical contamination in most of the ponds and streams. So we'll talk a little more. Heather? As I mentioned, the site's undergoing, it's getting cleaned up under the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. That's not quite like Superfund. Superfund's federal. MCP is a voluntary program at the state, and that's where my clients are working with Mass DEP to clean this up. The characterization and assessment of the site has been going on for quite a few years, partly because of the size of the site and the impacts that there were on soil, sediment, groundwater. So originally, our clients were paying for all of this. And so it was phased so that keep the ball moving. But it took a few years to get the whole thing characterized in terms of what contamination is out there, therefore what do you have to do to clean it up. 2019 and 2020 is when the next phase of the MCP process was done. That's where, now that you know what's out there, you come up with options for cleaning it up. And then you evaluate the different options. That was that timeframe. And then in, I believe it was June 2021, the Remedial Action Plan was approved by Mass DEP, and that laid out, you know, what the requirements of the cleanup are going to be. How clean, how much sediment's going to have to come out, what's the highest concentration of various contaminants that you can leave there, that sort of thing. In between all this is when we started, there were two areas of the site where it was documented that munitions were likely to be present. And so while some of that was going on, we started doing the actual excavation and removal work. It wasn't limited to those two areas that we originally thought. And I think it's safe to say that whole bottom third of that site, you could almost find something if you put a shovel in the ground. So that munitions response part of the project has been ongoing and is still ongoing, and it's being done under the framework of an immediate response action under the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. It doesn't override any requirements or anything, but it does give a few procedural things that allow you to speed things up. And I guess the bottom bullet there, most of the contamination that we've discovered is above the yellow line there, so up in Hanover. But like I say, there's some contaminated sediment that comes down toward the dam, Factory Pond Dam. Heather?
Before we continue, Ms. Kement?
So as I recall, I think it was in the 2019, 2020 timeframe, some of us attended a meeting that you had given with some other folks in Hanover about this issue. That's when it sort of came to our attention that Hanover was leading the charge on this, but we had a piece of it in Hanson, and that we thought we needed to have a little bit more of a voice, or at least a voice, in what was happening. And I think this board, or at least a portion of it, I think most, at least probably all four of us, I think, had written when you were looking for comments on which remediation plan, you know?
I think the Phase 3 report.
Yes, okay. And then I think, you know, that's kind of, now that you're going into this next phase, which I'm, what I'm interpreting is that it's much more severe than was originally and could have really been anticipated. Are you circling back with all of the, with the two towns to ask, you know, what we would feel comfortable with? Or are you going full remediation, like the full-on cleanup to try to get rid of? I remember there were three, and I don't know the technical terms because this is not my bailiwick, but I remember there were three different options. One was sort of let it go, one was sort of middle of the road, and then the other was the deep clean, you know, really get down to the, you know. Are you going to the third, you know?
Let me try to break what you're asking into a couple of pieces. Because I think you got a couple. What I believe you guys commented on was called the Phase 3 Report, the Phase 3 Remedial Action Plan. And because the site, because none of the clients, none of the people that were responsible own any of this property, the preference was get rid of it and take it away. You know, there are other options at times when you can put a cap over it, you can do other things. So when you get to that point, there's not too many other choices. It's, then it's how much, how much am I going to dig out and take away? And as you, I think, are remembering, the one alternative was to clean it up to risk-based standards for sediment and groundwater and soil. The other one was clean to background, okay? And the health-based standards that have been negotiated for sediment and groundwater, well, sediment was the big one, that's the biggest volume, the biggest cost element here, was only slightly higher than background. And so it was about a $5 million difference at the time to go down a couple of more parts per million. And so when all the factors were looked at together, you know, implementability and cost and whether everything was commercially available, the one with achieving the risk-based cleanup goals was the recommended selected alternative.
Okay. Now has that, is that going to change, given this new information?
The new, I'm not sure what the new information was. Is one of the things that has changed in the last couple of years is the magnitude of the munitions response.
That's the information I was talking about, yeah.
The munitions response has to be completed before the cleanup of the sediment and the ponds. Because you can't send random workers out to do that. We have unexploded ordinance technicians doing that work right now. So the mag, you know, what the difference of finding that additional munition stuff is, it's extended this phase, the work that we started, it doesn't change the nature of it. The only change that came about, I think it's on another slide, but the restrictions that were on the land part got extended into the pond because we are now very certain how much stuff is offshore there in Hanover right by that. Yeah.
On that path that extends into the pond, you're talking about Lily Pond that's up the other end of Factory Pond?
There's, we have not found.
My name's Don Howard. I live in Page 60, Winter Street in Hanson. I worked for the Hanover DPW for almost 33 years, between Earl Simmons and the Hanover DPW. And 1975, I went through that whole area with a backup and a fire chief looking for the contamination that they said was there from NIT. We never found it. And the only thing we found was down back by the bridge where the High Hill is, where they used to shoot into the banking. Well, Lily Pond is the little pond behind it from the fence back towards Springwater River. And there was a lot of debris that I think people thought they had an old bulldozer at one point in time, and they were just pushing stuff in there. And back then, they said they were going to put a coffer dam in like from the bridge back towards Hanover, out about 30 feet, so they could pump out the water and excavate that whole edge of the banking. Because it's, I believe, there's probably some stuff right in that banking under the water right now, if you haven't touched any of that.
Now, you're hitting on two or three things that are correct, but I think you're putting them together a little differently. The, and we're going to talk about that in just a second. But the bulldozing and the pushing of stuff into Factory Pond, that's down.
There's nothing in Factory Pond that I know of.
Oh, there is. Well, I'll show you a picture.
Well.
At Lily Pond, we're northern pond, there's a little bit of chemical contamination in the sediment there, but we've not found.
It's in the sediment, yes.
Yeah, we've not found any ordinance that far up.
Thank you.
Yep. If I don't answer your other question when I go through that slide, let me know. Okay. This is a little bit of ancient history now. We found a lot of things when we were exploring and cleaning up those first two areas. It expanded into almost all the adjacent areas where there were buried munitions that were hazardous. And then 2018, we started working in 2017 to remove that. 2018, we started pulling things out of the pond, and that's what led to Factory Pond having the use restrictions. We've been pulling things out of there since 2017. These numbers are really kind of staggering if you've seen other facilities. 18,300 items were explosive that were removed, separated, and blown up by the Massachusetts State Bomb Squad. Very much inert debris. Inert debris won't blow up, but it looks like a munition. And so it's not a good thing to have in a public property. You know, people obviously would be concerned about it. A lot of contaminated soil that's been separated from these items. We've shipped off 10,000, over 10,000 tons of soil. And I'll think there's a map coming up next. We're about 75% done with the acreage in the upland in Hanover. And we've started the rest of it, but it's in different stages of work.
Now, when you say upland, you're not talking about the lower one-third?
Well, upland, I just mean not pond. That's how I'm using the word.
Okay, all right, okay.
This is ongoing, and this gets back to maybe what you were hearing about the dam, the coffer dam. This is, you see the little different, or the break in the colors there? That's the Greenway Footbridge that goes across Factory Pond here. This is the footbridge. This is where we're doing a lot of the work. This picture is a result of a survey for metal that we did in the pond. And pink is lots of metal, blue is not much metal. So what we've gone, we've characterized more since just this survey, and we know that this metal contains munitions as well. Sometimes pretty high quantity pockets of munitions mixed in with pipe from the old facility and, you know, other metal. So the work that, you know, it wasn't a very, you know, creative name. It's called the High Metal Density Area. It's the pink. And we're setting up for that right now. That work's going to go on this summer, spring and summer. And the, well, here's, we did some just potholing in that pink area. This is what came out. These are munitions rounds. These are live munitions rounds. And it's mixed in with all sorts of other metal trash. So we believe what happened is when the place closed down, they bulldozed a lot of things into the pond. But we're going to put a coffer dam up on the outside of that pink area, drain the water down so that we can essentially dig it in the dry, which is the much safer way to do ordinance work, more precise. You know better when you get it, when you don't, than when you have to do it in the water. Okay, so that's the munitions. The distinction then is the final remedy. And when all the munitions work is done, then the final remedy work will kick in. And it's designed to get the mercury and lead and other chemical contamination out of the sediment and soil. Mercury and lead are the two contaminants that are most associated with the sediments here. There's some numbers. It's a pretty large number of cubic yards. They're going to have to be dredged or excavated out. Third bullet shows the cost. Our estimate that was in that Phase 3 rap was around $76 million. And then in the process, we always do, you know, minus 15%, plus 25% to give a range to take into account the uncertainties and contingencies. Mass DEP took our data and did another, their own estimate, and it was a little bit higher. The work is scheduled. We think it will occur over a two-year period, two field seasons. We're working on the remedial design right now with a first draft of the Phase 4. Some of these things look alike in name, a remedy implementation plan. It's basically the design for the details of how the removal is going to happen. The first draft of that goes in, is scheduled to go in in July, this summer.
So with this ramp up in the costs, the obvious question, this is not going to cost the taxpayers in either town any money, I'm assuming, right? Okay. And the quote-unquote, and I hate this term, but I know it's the term you guys use, potentially responsible parties will be paying, or who will be footing the bill for this massive cleanup?
I can talk in generalities.
Yep.
At the beginning of the project, the potentially responsible parties were paying for it, all the characterizing. You probably have heard of the trust fund that was set up when one of the private parties went bankrupt. That money has been paying for all the munitions response work and some of the characterization since then. The potentially responsible parties, Mass DEP and DOD are working on a consent decree to figure out who pays after the trust is depleted. That's, they're working on that now. So I do not believe the towns are on the hook for any of this at this point, but we're not party, we're the technical people here.
Okay. I would certainly hope we're not on the hook because A, we don't have any money, and B, we did not contribute to this happening, so.
Okay, we're almost there. So these next couple of slides are just if the final remedy plays out the way it's looking right now, what will be the most, what will be the biggest changes for you guys in Hanson? Like I said, there's two years of field work assumed, so before that, there's other things. The best way of getting the large amount of sediment removed north of that Greenway Footbridge is to lower the water level in Factory Pond using the Factory Pond Dam. That way, almost all of the work north of that footbridge can be done as excavation rather than floating dredging. This picture that you see here is a picture of, this light blue is the elevation of the water if the boards are pulled out of the Factory Pond Dam. So it won't dry everything out. It'll dry a lot of the northern portions of Factory Pond. There'll still be water flowing in here. And, but some of the edges of that will be exposed like a mudflap.
And that means you're going to drain Factory Pond?
We're going to take Factory Pond down about four and a half feet.
Well, that'll be done by the, it'll go down that file right now, very easily by opening the phone, right across the street from my house.
And as I understand it, both towns own part of the dam, right?
It's fit like 50/50.
Yeah. So it's something that we need to coordinate with both towns. But, so the first year, well, coordinating to figure out exactly, you know, who controls that, getting the proper, you know, approvals to do that, all the working with your CONCOM, the whole business. After we dig, there's always been the question of to what degree do we need to put material back in? Do we need to restore wetlands? Some of that is pretty clearly defined by regulations. Some of it is a little more up to the owners. So that's another topic that we would want to be talking with you about. When you expose that much area that's usually underwater, that kicks in a much greater regulatory review by the MEPA office than what we had to do for that limited area of the pink area on that. So there'll be, you guys will have inroads to that. And then unlike the Hanover, where all the work we've been doing so far has been on or abutting town property, you have private citizens here. So we have to work with that, too.
Ms. Kement, so what type of impact? I mean, I'm blown away with the thought of this, and I appreciate and respect that people far more educated on this have made the decision that this is how to approach this. But I am really like shocked at the thought of draining such an important little ecosystem and all of the little, you know, flora, fauna, all of those things, which unfortunately are living in a toxic little environment right now. And I don't, you know, I recognize that you're saying, you know, you restore it, but I mean, we all know restoration, once those things go backwards, it's hard to really fully restore in any timely manner. Only time really does that with the right conditions. I guess, is this an all or none type of thing? Like, is it going to be the entire section, or is it going to be like pieces of it? Or is it all or nothing when you're pulling the Factory Dam there?
All or nothing as to the lowering the water or where we would have to dig?
Where you would dig.
Most of the area has some level of contamination in the top six inches at least.
And what happens if a resident perchance does not give permission for this remediation to happen on their property?
I honestly don't know how that would be handled. We obviously couldn't go in there without their permission. The issue here, and I don't know what Mass DEP or any other authority has to say, your piece is part of this big thing, you know, we need to get in there or else your stuff is going to migrate down and recontaminate some other area. I, that's not my thing. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. Fair enough.
Quick question, kind of going back to the dam. I know that there's been a lot of efforts here, especially in the Commonwealth as well as Maine, where dam removal is the thing to do right now. Has there been discussion on whether or not removing the dams permanently isn't the cards? Or is it just to remove the dams to do the work and then reestablish the dams?
Well, first of all, we got a lot of comments on that Phase 3 report with people who wanted to take the dam out. That's not our thing. The question is, what do you have to do to get the contamination out? And you certainly wouldn't want to remove a dam that's holding contamination back. So before anybody, you know, beyond this project can talk about that, this has to get cleaned up, because you'll just spread it down, and you don't want to do that. this has to get cleaned up, 'cause you'll just spread it down, and you don't wanna do that. We are not taking the Factory Pond Dam out. We're only taking the boards that adjust the water level, 'cause the Factory Pond Dam was recently renovated.
Ninety-three.
Yeah, so it's in way better shape than it was back in the day when this project started, so. Did that clarify that?
To a point, yeah. No, I just was, I was...
You know, he's with the contractor, and DEP is working on these remedial action plans. So all this stuff has to be approved by DEP, and then they'll pass it on to the contractor and stuff. So this is another, I'm listening, DEP reviewing everything. We should've got some information today, but we didn't get it, but DEP tells what's gonna happen. And as far as residents and whatnot, we do have a lot of residents, I've mapped it out, how many residents there are. It'll go by their deeds and that type of stuff, the research, the deeds, if they have deeds, rights to a shoreline. We have a lot of town old man, you know, we get people, you know, featured areas, they would drive, Leslie Drive. And all the areas we went through, we did, you know, surveying for the testing stuff. So DEP is well involved, and we still, as the planners, being approved now, we're just working on what is approved through DEP and everybody else. Just to tip the pressure off.
No, I just was curious, just because if we're gonna go to that point of draining, why not just leave it drained if it's more benefit for the ecosystem? But nonetheless...
Well, actually, it kinda gets back, you know. Any of the time you're doing a waterway or a wetland like this, the balance is, do you destroy it to save it? You know, kinda thing, yeah, 'cause you have to pretty much take it out. Wetlands have, there's requirements to reestablish wetlands, and there are multiple-year monitoring that the restoration is occurring. So it is risky, but, you know, that's part of the plan, to put things back, and... I think I, did I get everything?
Yep, yep.
Yep.
I think Mr. Howard had us here, though.
Don, did you have anything to add?
Me?
Yes, sir.
I was wondering, back when they hit the dam, I understood that conservation owned a hundred feet from the center of the river into Hanover, and center of the river into Hanson. I don't know how much truth it is in it, but that's what I understood back at the time, 'cause I was on the committee of this originally. But somehow or another, I got bumped off of it back in the eighties, and I was disappointed with it, because my house checks every time, almost, when you have all the explosions, 'cause I'm just the other end of Factory Pond, down with the dam, it's where the ski shot.
Right.
And I'm not that far away, probably half a mile.
My understanding of the town line is, most of the spillway east is in Hanover. A little bit of the spillway and that control facility where the boards are.
Where the flume is.
Yeah.
Where the old ski shot is now.
Right.
Right, well, that's all in Hanson, in that area, that particular area.
It's not quite in the middle of the river, but it's a little bit to the ones...
Because that's where the original river goes, right down there.
Right, well, that picture that had the blue line that I said that would stay wet even with, that's the old river channel, right there.
Great, thank you.
I just had two additional questions, and maybe you're gonna get to this, I don't know. I, thinking back to that Hanover forum that you had, and to the forum that we had, two of the things that kept coming up were impact to groundwater, right? 'Cause everybody's concerned about the water that they're drinking. And then the other concern that came up was other health concerns that might have been caused by all of this. And at the time, I believe there was somebody from the Department of Public Health, and she explained, I don't recall her name, but she was very eloquent. She explained that, yes, anecdotally, that they had heard that there were increased cases of cancer in this area, but that in terms of tracking, the DPH could really only track based upon where somebody lived at the time that they first became aware that they had cancer. So trying to actually say that it was because you lived in this neighborhood was very difficult, and it just wasn't the way the DPH tracked those types of things. Now that this is becoming a much, I can't even believe I'd ever say these words, but bigger than what was originally thought in terms of the munitions and the contamination and all of this, it does really make me wonder, are we gonna be circling back? Is there some additional dialogue that's gonna be had with DPH? Or maybe you've already had this, I don't know. You know, are you keeping them up to date with all of this? Is there any additional tracking that's gonna be happening? Do we have some assurances about the groundwater? 'Cause I know people were kind of freaking out about it before, and I'm sure this isn't gonna make them feel any better.
Well, what should make you feel better is the groundwater was something that was measured right from the late nineties. And there were only very small pockets up in that production area that were problematic, and those have been dealt with. And the fact that we found more munitions in the south, well, we've been sampling that groundwater there before we knew there was this stuff here. So if it had released, we would've been seeing it all along. And fortunately, groundwater has not been a concern. You know, the levels have been below regulatory, except, like I said, in those couple of small places, and part of that was not even related to fireworks. So I don't, I don't think that's a concern.
And what about additional potential health concerns that people? I know you've heard this, because it's, you know, I hear it all the time. I, you know, see posts on Facebook, people have talked to me about it. People that live in the area are very, very concerned about, and I probably would be, too. You know, the unknown, what, how could this potentially be impacting me? Am I okay to plant a garden if I'm living near there? And I know you're saying the groundwater is within, you know, safety limits and all of that, but, you know...
That, you know, that's not why Tetra Tech was brought in. That is a Department of Health thing. But I believe there's been at least two Department of Health studies. The more recent one, I think, is the one where the lady reported in twenty nineteen at the Hanover High School. And I don't do that kind of work, but I do know that because of, you know, that kind of problem depends on your exposure over time, where you were, how long. And I believe the records just aren't kept in a way that makes doing that kind of analysis easy.
So would you guys ever circle back with DPH and say, you know, at the time you did this study in twenty nineteen, we thought the scope was this, but it's turned out to be a much bigger issue? I'm just wondering if there's some kind of a dialogue, or is it frozen in time?
Well, I don't think there's been an increase in contamination. They've known all along what we've been getting, you know, we've been finding. So, I mean, what triggered that work was, I think, concern from the resident, one or two residents up there. So that's how that process starts, I think. It's not part of the Massachusetts contingency plan.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is, despite the fact that the amount of munitions has increased exponentially from what was originally thought, that there's no concern that that would lead to additional health risks?
Because those munitions were there leaking for forty years already, and so we were protected the residues from that.
Okay, thank you.
The, just the, so you also, yeah, one second. As we're doing the munitions response work, we are also meeting the soil cleanup goals for the final remedy, so that we don't have to go back there. So when we walk away from that part, the munitions are gone, and the soil meets what's called the S-one standards, the residential soil standards, so. And that'll be, those areas will be done.
Thank you.
Just to get you aware of, all the patents throughout the Commonwealth, the monitoring this job at the site as it goes along, DPH is always on the calls, they're always monitoring everything. DEP is managing everything, so everything's being looked at from all aspects, throughout the patents of this...
Okay, so DPH is in the loop on what's going on. All right, that's helpful, thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Mr. Lisa, I noticed that you, you're saying that there's gonna be an increase of traffic on Winter Street? Is that on the Hanson side or the Hanover side?
Up north.
North, which is Hanson or Hanover?
Hanover.
Hanover, okay. Well, I just, if it was gonna be in Hanson, I was just wondering if there was gonna be money from the state to repair the roads that might be impacted by the increased traffic?
The plant, the design is in progress, as I said, but the material that we've been shipping out now comes out of Lander's driveway and goes north on Winter Street. So not, it didn't occur to me that Winter Street comes all the way down here to you guys, to us now, but when, even when we pull all the sediment out of the ponds, it's very likely to come out and go north up Winter Street and head toward the highways.
I'm sorry, I just want, and your last bullet, off-site ambient air will be monitored to ensure no impacts to neighboring properties. This isn't something I actually would've even thought about, but now I feel a bit anxious about it. If, in fact, it's monitored and something should come up that couldn't have been reasonably anticipated, do you have a remediation plan and a response to get right on that, so that people aren't breathing whatever this might be?
Yeah. The, we've been doing, we've done this monitoring about seven times over the four years already. Anytime we go to an area that has different contamination, or is in a different location relative to the boundary, we redo it, just to make sure. We've never seen anything going offsite. What we're most watching is particulates, because the mercury and lead that would've been in soil or in sediment would be on these particulates. It's not like a gas. So we monitor a lot, the particulates, when we do this work. We monitor the boundaries, the, we have a little meteorological station on site, so we know which way the wind's blowing all the time. So we position those to make sure it's not going offsite. We also have local, near the work area monitors for particulates and organics. So, but like you say, something comes up, and all of a sudden, we get a, one of the alarms goes off that we set, we stop work, and then we do have a chain of things. Determine what caused that, was it vehicle, strangely enough, just truck traffic on site, when it's very dry, will be, you know, put a little bit up. So we determine what the cause is. If we can determine that cause right away, we can try to fix it, or water sprays, whatever we need to do, lower the production rate to make, yes, we do have a mitigation. And if, we've never gotten anywhere close, but if we can't figure out what happened, we stop, and then we can figure it out.
And as you move into this phase, what kind of a communication? You know, it really seems to me as though there needs to be some robust communication, right? With the people that are gonna be impacted, that live in that area, that potentially, you know, 'cause they're gonna be your eyes and ears, too. You've got all of these well-intentioned technical things, but people may notice something that, you know, you may not pick up on immediately. Is there a forum? Are there gonna be written communications, all of these types of things? Like, how are we gonna engage people and let them know what's going on?
I think that's part of what we work out going forward here. Hanover has put a website together that is pretty actively tracked, so, you know, we always let them know, and I think, Lisa, you're on the email, when we're gonna do detonations, and they post it, so people know, well, the alarm's gonna go off at two-thirty on Friday. Don't be alarmed, you know. But I think, you know, you guys know your constituents better than anybody, and I think we need to figure out what's the best way to do that communication.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question, just to clarify, when you said that you measure ear quality six or seven times already, is this twenty-four hours monitoring, or is this just six or...
It was six or seven events that we did it. Typically, the events were like two weeks' continuous monitoring, or it was two weeks from the time window when we're working, you know, when we would be generating some sort of particulates.
So there'll be twenty-four-hour monitoring, is what I'm asking, as we're moving forward? Or is this just when you guys do site work?
Once we start digging, at the beginning, at least, at the beginning, we will start the continuous monitoring.
Okay.
What we have found in all the previous is, you know, be very little. And so it just, as long as the same type of work is happening, just effectiveness, cost-effectiveness is, you know, we don't, we discontinue the monitoring until we change some part of the operation.
Well, just me personally, I would want twenty-four-hour monitoring as we're working on the pond. You know, not just, oh, yeah, we did this yesterday, it's fine. But I would want it to be continued, because...
Yeah, and I think to build on that, Matt, if, I believe you said that earlier phases weren't really at as close proximity to homes as this. You, I think you said earlier, most of the property was, you said this was the first time in this...
Close to residential.
Yeah, so wouldn't that drive some of the decision as to how continuously you would monitor it, since you've now got people in close proximity versus it being sort of away from residents?
Well, the distinction between continuous monitoring and twenty-four-hour monitoring. If we're not digging or moving material, we're not creating possibly emissions.
Well, with the wind, if the pond's gonna be drained, it's dry out, right? And you have a gust of wind, you have a storm coming in, and it kicks up the dust from the pond.
You got a point. When we say the pond is drained, it's muck. So you're right, if it got to be really hot or something for a prolonged period, possibly dusty. But probably not, but, yeah, I mean, we can work this into whatever the plan is.
It'll dry up and crack like the moon surface. That's what happens when the pond's got no water in it.
Mr. Clemens?
I have a question for you.
Hold on one second. Go ahead, Mr. Howard.
That pit, that sand pit out back, where the bank is, is the pit still there that got the water in it? In the middle? The one pipe that came from Willie Pond and went into a pit? They never told me what it was used for, but I put that in. I was just curious whether it was still there or not.
Not completely sure, I know exactly. There was a couple of pits where they...
There was a pit with water in it, but I put a pipe from the pond into it.
So, Mr. Howard, if, um, thank you. Mr. Clemens?
There's so much going on that's being learned, and so much more to learn, and so much eagerness to know everything immediately. There's no doubt in my mind why there's just a lot of concern floating around, both in this room and beyond. But to move back to one very specific thing here, I look at the term mud flap. And I wonder if that's the best term? Because for those of us who live near the ocean, it conjures up the image or the memory of low tide, especially around certain beaches, we have sulfur compounds, it's, it kinda smell bad. What we should be talking about, maybe, is just exposed pond water or exposed sediment. But the mud flap, to a lot of us around here, means a saltwater thing that comes and goes twice a day. And especially if you lived near Boston fifty years ago, the memory was just pretty bad. It just might not be the best term.
Not the best term.
Because it's used so universally to mean something different. This is not that. So just a thought, in terms of questions as we go forward.
It is exposed sediment, and it's not likely to get rewet on any routine thing. It gets dried out, sits that way, becomes a harder surface, and then...
And I don't know if Tetra Tech tracks this, but there's at least two other examples very nearby here of places that used to be, well, we use the term pond. What we're talking about, really, is impoundments of natural streams. These are not great ponds or kettle ponds like in McQuan Pond or in... There used to be a pond in East Bridgewater, where the Subtak River was dammed up to create power for the old power project. That pond was, that impound, I should say, has, over recent decades, been drained, so it's no longer there. And I don't know anyone who referred to edges of that form of bottom of the pond as being a mud flap. What's happened is it's been restored to a natural, vegetated, riparian zone, and you have a healthy river with herring migrating up through it now, that didn't happen for a hundred years before. Similarly, and more recently, in Kingston, the Jones River has had two dams removed. And as recently as today, I like to go down Elm Street and see what it looks like upstream from the bridge where the impound used to be. And I see a nicely vegetated set of banks, which I... And I see a nicely vegetated set of banks, which I think had very little, if any, resemblance to a mud flap even when it was new. So I think there just might be a better term.
Well, I'm sure.
That would that would be just accurate and not conjure up instant wrong images.
Yeah, I understand.
Just like that.
Yep.
I think we're ready for the next one. Thank you.
I think that was year one. Just again, year one is when the digging north of the of the Greenway Footbridge is going on in Hanover. But these are some of the things that you'll see down in your problems.
And so, I'm sorry, so just for timelines, because I know we've got various years of various phases. What year are we talking about for year one?
The munitions response is scheduled through twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
The plan is, is that while that's being finished, the design gets completed, the permitting effort, which is going to take a good year at least, right? So somewhere, the first digging at earliest would be like twenty twenty-five. It may be a little somewhere after that depending on how the the permitting and everything goes.
Right, thank you.
Uh, second year, restore the water levels to let the the area fill back up, close the dam down. Um, the areas that are in Hanson are relatively shallow. They're they're, they include a large fraction of the pond footprint. But how much sediment has to come out is very limited, typically six or twelve inches. And with most equipment, you can't cut less than six inches kind of thing. So it's that kind of a removal. Um, there would be a floating, you know, uh dredge type thing floating on a a barge, moving around in Lower Factory Pond. Um, the dredge sediment will be processed pretty much where the soil is being processed right now in Hanover. And then it gets transported to an offsite facility for disposal. Um, we have requirements for the surface of the sediment that's left. We have cleanup goals for that sediment. We do sampling after we remove the sediment. And then we do the backfilling and restoration as the ConComs in both towns and the wetlands protection people define the requirements. And we set up our our plan accordingly. Okay, I think that might be it. Well, we've been doing questions throughout, but certainly if there's other questions.
I'll start with the board and then I'll move to you, Mr. Clemens. Uh, Mr. Mitchell.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. What's this property going to look like in five, ten years? Once you guys are all gone, packed up and onto the next project, what's this property going to look like? And what could be done?
Your part or the Hanover part?
All of it.
It's up to you guys. It should be clean and clean and usable for just about anything, you know. The Hanover part has a designation as a recreational land under Chapter something or other in the state. Um, so it's likely to stay in a recreational vein, whatever that variety of uses is. Um, I mean, we're going to be leaving it, I think, with a kind of clean clean slate to, uh, and I think Hanover is starting to think about what they're going to do with it. Um, but, you know, on your part at the bottom, like I say, most of that is private property going in and we're just going to be removing sediment from what's currently underwater, you know, so it, and Hanson, it might look pretty much like it's looking right now.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hicki, do you?
I have a few.
All right.
Um, and I was actually hoping, Heather, if you could bring us back to the slide where it showed the land from nineteen sixty-eight and now.
That's the second or third slide, I think. There you go.
Perfect, thanks, Heather. Um, the yellow line, that represents the Hanson portion down.
Down here.
Yeah, and a a couple of times you've said the lower third. So if, you know, if I was to cut that picture into thirds, I would say Hanson has half of the lower third. Would you agree almost?
The lower, well, when we talk about lower thirds.
Yeah, my my point being is that you've said a couple of times that Hanson or if we cut this into thirds, there's one third, there's two thirds, and here's the third third to make one full property. Hanson has about half of that lower third. So my point being is that you said most of the stuff was found, um, you know, where it's Hanover. But even though we only have this little bit.
We haven't found anything.
You haven't found anything now.
No munitions in south of this yellow line.
Okay, but my problem is all this contamination that could be coming down, um, you know, through the years with the water is coming down into Hanson's lower third. My point being is that, um, any of that mercury, uh, or anything else that has come down has come down into Hanson.
Certainly has, and we we've characterized concentrations all through this area. You're right. We've not found any munitions related items down in here.
Okay, but the contaminants.
Contaminated sediment, yes, and it probably came from up there somewhere.
So the next question is, when you drain that, where is the water going to go? When you take out the dams and drain it down so that you can get to what Mr. Clemens referred to as a a bad term, the mud flap? Um, where is that water going to go?
Water will go downstream. There'll be what they call silk curtains to keep any sediment from going down. We've we've measured surface water during this whole characterization as well. And even in the very contaminated parts of sediment and munitions, the water is very clean because this stuff sticks to the sediment particles. So as long as you keep the turbidity down and you keep particles from moving downstream, when you do that, you're fine.
Okay, and kind of follow up on Laura's question, um, you know, with the the toxic, um, sediment on the plants, um, I guess my question would be more of a conservation type question. But if you're taking everything out, which would include any plant life or anything small that's in there, um, you know, how, can you gauge? Or, you know, maybe this is a question for Phil in private, but how long would it take for that to get back so that it's not contaminated or toxic or, um?
The usual process is you excavate out what you know is contaminated. Check that upper layer to see what's left. If it meets your criteria, then the restoration plan would kick in. And that is what has to get worked out for this. But it's typically putting back either material to reestablish the grade so that the flow is similar to what it used to be with the uppermost layer having organic matter that would promote beneficial organisms coming back and all that sort of thing. The the restoration requirements are very important.
That would include planting, but to Jim's point, that would include some mitigation, planting, replanting, things that normally would have been in that type of an environment.
Wetlands usually involve replanting. Areas underwater typically do not.
Right, right.
But yeah, if if a wetland that has wetland plants and is a designated wetland, if that's ripped out to be cleaned, then it has to be restored to like, like things.
Okay, and that would be, um, under your purview of what you're doing then?
The design of the final remedy includes either specifications or prescriptive stuff about restoration. It'll probably be, the first draft will probably be specifications because both towns have a role in that.
Okay.
Okay, but so you're saying specifications and design, um, as far as execution and planting and purchasing the plants, I I I'm trying to get to, you know.
That's part of the cost of the cleanup.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. Okay.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair. The other, the only, the last question I had was, uh, and I wanted to make sure I heard you right on this, is that you said over the past forty years, there've been seven tests?
Past four years.
Four.
Since we were doing all the munitions response work.
Okay.
We set up air monitors right at the beginning, looked up the data, didn't see anything caused by the site. And then when we moved to a different contaminated area, even though we were doing the same digging and stuff, we did it again. So we've rechecked every time one of the variables could have changed.
Okay, yeah, four years is a lot better than forty when you're doing seven tests.
I think forty came in.
Scratch that one out.
Yeah, one extra zero.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board before we go out?
Just one quick follow up.
Mr. Weeks?
Um, so when all the planting is done and everything's pretty much checked off, do you do one last check before you before you leave just to make sure everything's good? Or once you stop planting, is that pretty much?
No, there's, uh, I think the Phase Three report, which was discussed here, that's kind of a conceptual design document. And I think that weighed out a three-year monitoring for, to see that the plants on the shore and this and that actually take. And if they don't, they get replaced.
Right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Clemens?
A couple things. One is, uh, we've talked a lot about, uh, monitoring the water, monitoring the sediment. And not just the, we've talked about monitoring aquatic animals like fish. The Conservation Commission from several years ago, right up through now, has always wanted to see the data that's been found, what are the levels in the fish? What are the levels in the sediment, were there high water in between? What are the levels in the water? We have not yet seen anything. We would like to correct that because the more we are aware of what's been learned throughout, the more the commission or people on it can constructively participate in planning what the better future will look like. So that's just a little bit of frustration I wanted to mention. But, um, separate from that, but of course related to all this, I saw information on one slide about floating hydro dredge or something like that.
Floating platform.
Of floating platform. Well, if you're moving sediment, now it's a dredge. And hydro dredging is something well-known, even though it's kind of expensive to do. And if you, unless you were moving buckets of sludge from the from the, uh, floating platform on shore, you'd probably be pumping it through a pipe of some sort. Uh, my only point to mention that is that, uh, that's very different from digging in the dry. So which is it? Or is it some of both?
It's some of both.
Okay, just just checking.
North of the Greenway Footbridge, we're trying to do as much as possible excavation, digging in the dry. Um, if, since we can't de-water south of the Greenway Footbridge completely, it has to be a combination of the floating and the.
You don't think you can de-water south of the Greenway Footbridge? Um, when they removed the dam on the Eel River in Plymouth off of Long Pond Road, what they did was they temporarily rooted the Eel River through a cul- culvert, through a plexus pipe while they excavated things. Why couldn't we not do that here? Just a thought.
It can be done. I mean, we're talking about two seasons, so.
Well, we're talking about dozens of years so far, yeah. So just thinking, what I would like to see is treat this less like a regular old engineering project and more like the visionary, large picture, long-term fix that it ought to be. I just don't want to see us miss opportunities to both sort of catch up to where we ought to be now with information that we should have already been getting and have a plan, which we're about to start making here, for a fix that no one will regret. Um, a state agency that I haven't heard mentioned in all the discussion is the Department of Ecological Restoration, DER. They're very active. They've been part of presentations in this town before. There's a lot of very appropriate enthusiasm for restoring the environment, hence the name of the agency. I'm curious as to whether they've been involved at all and whether they ought to be and how to make that happen. Now, they have limited resources. They don't have time to go to every meeting, this and that. But as we, as town officials here, try to help envision the right way forward and hopefully a practical and affordable way towards a fix, let's not miss the opportunities that might be right before us. If you want to restore everything to the background, if you go back four hundred years, there was no dam. There was a river coming through a wetland. And who knows, maybe that is what the future could look like. And bottom line last comment for the moment is, if we move towards a more natural, original stream type water flow through there, you will still have wetlands along the edges. The riparian zone will still be there. And it will move to a point where now you can really implement the Rivers Protection Act, which applies to protecting two hundred feet each side of a of the center line of, or the boundary of a stream on each side. So there are a number of regulatory tools that we would use depending on which environmental design we went for. And as for Mr. Mitchell's question, what will the area look like? It's up to us. It is not like what you want it to look like. It's what's the best environmental, uh, function of that neighborhood? And when the, when those those functions are restored, it's it's going to be fine. A very small number of people have a left water view now. Who doesn't enjoy that? We enjoy it right up behind the town hall here. Of course, this is an impoundment too. But, um, there might be a greater good to be achieved if we think a little bit beyond just to, uh, clean out the pond and put it back the way it was. That might not be the best solution. We'll just see going forward, I'm sure.
Right, that's clearly input that needs to come out as we're going forward.
So I'm inputting it right now.
Yep.
I guess that's my question, um, Mr. Chair, is I've heard a lot of concerns expressed here. And it's hard not to keep feeling like Hanover's driving the bus on this and they've been dri- it's sort of like they're they've been driving the bus like, you know, for an eight mile, you know, bus trip. And we're on the seventh mile and we're hopping, trying to hop on this bus and, you know, trying to say, we've got a few stops along the way here too and things we'd like to influence. So I'm trying, I I'm trying to figure out, how do we make sure that our conservation agent and our health agent and our chair of conservation and our town administrator and this board, how do we make sure that that we, as the people that are representing this town and working for the town, our voices are being heard and that we are influencing the ultimate outcome here? How how how, can you make a suggestion on that? I know there are calls and we're participating in those, uh, you know, but what else can we do to help influence that?
That's certainly the first first stop, I think. Secondly, the fact that I'm here and I appreciate this, I'm sure has gone much longer than many people anticipated. But over the course of the four years with Hanover, we had lots of just informal sit downs. And, you know, much of that's going to need to happen here too. Um, we'll set up, we could set up some regular kind of thing or, you know, something that would be triggered by certain parts of the design. Or I think we just need to start figuring that out. Um, like I say, this was kind of a kickoff in in a sense. And you're right, up until this point, work and the problem have been in Hanover. And a lot of the, you know, what are the requirements for the wetlands, what are the requirements for the ponds, were handled through the ConCom there because it was their property and they were the owners. So it's different here. So it'll be a slightly different process.
I just add one thing. I know there's been a lot of concerns about involving the ER and all the restoration. Who gets involved?
Well, as part of the permitting, we'll do an environmental impact report through MIPA. So there's different thresholds that will trigger and will, different agencies will get involved. And there'll be, you'll, the Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, you'll get noticed. There'll be a comment period where you guys will get involved. So we're not there yet, but you will have a a chance to voice your concerns too.
Through you, Mr. Chair. And I totally appreciate that, that, um, in terms of regulatory requirements and compliance, that you guys will do what you're required to do. I'm asking for something more organic and, um, more more of a, an open dialogue so that we truly are influencing and not you, not just checking off boxes that we've gotten things from the various regulatory agencies.
No, and I I totally respect that and understand that. I'm just saying further down the road that all of these agencies will be included, so.
I mean.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say, I think a goal, which, uh, as kind of was just saying, is think of it as. is, think of it as have enough involvement of the various priorities up front in designing the plan, so when the plan is rolled out for their comments, they recognize it because they helped to write.
Yep, yep.
And you, you, you're writing a plan that has a much better chance of being approvalable with, with fewer bumps and corners and sharp edges to it. It would, that's just how good planning works, is to involve the, the stakeholders early on. I think as a town of Hanson, it might be that we've been sitting back, waiting for stuff to be handed to us. Yes, we've gone to, I've gone to several meetings in Hanover and other situations, but it, it might be time to actively step in and say, where's my chair? Because now we're talking about our water, our sediment, our wetlands, our residents, and, and we're way downstream from all of this. So, again, glad we're having this meeting, it's good, it's, I call it a positive step in the right direction, but there's a lot of communication to do here.
I really hate to say this word, because it's such an ugly word, but it feels like we might need a committee to, to work on this.
Right, you have time.
Where, like, the health agent, conservation, somebody, you know, like, and I know you two are like, "Good luck with that, I'm not going to be here." But we'll, we'll probably be looking for citizens at large also to be on that committee. But I, it, it does feel like, in order for us to all be communicating here, to have a voice with, with these guys and with Hanover, we're going to need to get our act together and start meeting regularly about this.
And to reiterate what I think, you know, you guys said, when we get marching more, you know, we're saying, you guys need to give us a plan for cleaning out this place. We put the work plan together, cost estimate, then it goes to Mass DEP. We, we can't work until they approve the money and the plan. So, don't underestimate Mass DEP as a gatekeeper in some of these decisions. But also, Lisa has my email address. All that data that you were mentioning, all the sediment data that we collected back into nineteen ninety-seven, it's online on the EDEP website. Granted, there's a lot of stuff in there, and, but if, you know, if you have particular things that you're looking for, we could point you.
Everything south of the yellow line, for sure.
Mr. Amato.
Okay, just to get everybody who's watching this, I mean, it goes, information goes to the Hanover, you know, Town Administrator, you know, Hanson Town Administrator, Hanson Board Health, Attorney General's Office, Paul Locke, Assistant Commissioner of Boston, this P W S.
He's on Mass DEP.
Mass DEP. Regional Director, so there. Then we have Michael Martin, who is working with the Board Health on sediment testing, the locations we're doing and everything, which that basically hasn't come through. And then, Mr. Panay, who's the Federal Site Management Section Chief, and we have Jennifer Davis, the Senior Counselor.
So, Mr. Amato, what you're saying is the information is out there.
If anyone wants to look at any of the things that Catcher Tech puts on, you can go on the Dean King website, and it's got a reference number, you can do everything, basically. So, the information's out there. I think to create a whole committee may be a little bit tough, because a lot of people are like, this is so involved, it takes so long, like, conservation myself, we've been at this for two and a half years, and it's probably, it's been there three or four years, so...
Right, well, in the, in the next two or three years, five, maybe five years, I think that having the opportunities where citizens could participate is a good thing, rather than we have to contact that list of people that you just mentioned.
I was going to say, those are people, those are the people that are watching the site.
Yep.
As things progress.
Yep, so, but, yep, so, if...
It's, it's a new dynamic with the, the individual property owners that hasn't been a part of the work north of the Footbridge, so it's, it's to be worked out.
So, that might be given up. Yeah, it might give them the opportunity, and you have to participate. Anything else?
Larry?
Yeah, Larry Carter, also Peter Rafferty, Catcher Tech. Mr. Mitchell, I wanted to answer your question. We do a project very similar, like, to this at South Basin Abbey, and it was about a two-year duration. I went back there three years after it was complete, after Manhattan not visiting the site, and it looked good, it looked like we had never been there.
Really?
So, I think if by five years, it's, it's got to look good, because there are performance standards that go along with the best direction. But I think the most important thing I wanted to say is, we don't know who's going to do this work. We would love to do this work from a business standpoint, but right now, we're doing the design, the permitting, kind of getting everything ready for the PRP group to reach agreement with the AG's office, appropriate the money, and implement the cleanup. So, from our standpoint, this is a performance-based contract. There it is, there's what we want you to do, bring it down to this level. Certainly, your point, we would love to do that work mechanically, south of the Footbridge, and that's just another tool in the toolbox. So, that, that's kind of like stepping in my role, is to permit this thing in a way that allows enough flexibility, enough freedom, enough tools in the toolbox to be able to do this thing, and to be also be able to shift gears to handle the problem. That's all, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? No? All right, with that being said, thank you very much for appearing before us.
Thank you, like I was going to say, I know we probably weren't expecting this long of the discussion, but...
No, I think it's very informative.
Very, very important, yep. Thank you.
Thank you. So, with that being said, we're moving on to the next item on our agenda, and that is, the next thing on our agenda is Harbor to Bay Ride in September.
Hi, T. David.
Nope, that was crossed off.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Yep. So, Ms. Green.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is, basically, this is just a charity bike ride, and they just wanted to make sure that Hanson knew that they were going to be riding through a part of Hanson. It's happening, and going to happen on September seventeenth this year. The fire chief and the police chief have already seen the plan and have signed off on it. We just want to make sure that the Board of Selectmen is aware of this. And the Harbor to the Bay, basically, they are, you know, they're beneficiaries, it says, they support AIDS groups in the Cape Cod Act and Community, Community Research Initiatives, and Fenway Health, and they've been, they've basically raised about six point two million dollars for this organization and people.
Perfect, thank you. So, with that being said, I think, I don't need a, a vote or anything that's acknowledged. Any questions from the board? No?
Nope, just as long as, you know, the usual suspects know that we have an AK chief mix, but...
Perfect. Next thing on the agenda is Select Board to vote to send notice of taking hearings. Ms. Green.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members. This is directly related to the Sleeper Property, also known as Zero McQuann Street. At this point, I'll, I'll turn it over to Kate, so she can explain this a little bit more fully to the board.
Hi, guys, thanks for having me this evening. Yes, as you recall, or you may recall, at the past town meeting, the town meeting authorized us to take this property using the eminent domain process, which, with their approval, we have just a few more steps to complete that process. If you recall, the reason why we wanted to seek authorization for taking was because there were certain title issues that couldn't be easily and quickly resolved, and we have an existing grant, which is helping to fund this purchase. That grant expires at the end of this fiscal year, so the taking is necessary. In the event we can't get it done by the end of the fiscal year, we have a second authorization to do a taking, so long as we get another land grant. That said, tonight is the first step in the Select Board's process to effectuate this taking. Specifically, you are to authorize, the Town Administrator, Lisa Green, to issue a notice of intent of the taking, and that's really a notice of the public hearing. There's a public hearing component for any taking, and it's going to be published that way, but it, it essentially announces that date. That date will be, and I'm pulling up my email to Lisa, so today's the seventeenth, which is your vote, and June fourteenth will be the actual taking, takings public hearing.
So, perfect.
It's almost.
So, moved in a second. Moved in a second. Any discussion?
Just, I just want to clarify, I think if people hear taking, they're going to think the town is, you know, taking by eminent domain, or something like this. In this particular case, the property owner would still receive the dollar amount that they would have received if there had been a clear title, and if we had been able to go through the process that we were going to go through. So, we're not taking, we are technically taking, but we will be...
Also compensate.
Exactly, thank you.
All right, with that being said, I'm looking for a vote. So, all in favor? Five oh. Thanks, Ms. Fedorov.
Thank you.
The next thing on the agenda is to vote to approve transfers. Ms. Green.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So, we have three transfers that are before the board, that are just basically from other line items to line items that the town is, is falling short on at this point. This is a, a common notice that happens this time of year, right after town meeting. So, you'll notice the first one is basically the Highway Department Town Fuel, because the cost of fuel, the Highway Department has, basically, they've run that line item down to zero and, and required twenty-five thousand dollars to continue operating the town vehicles. And that money is, is being taken from other line items that we have not expended all the money on. The second one you'll see is, again, this is risk management insurance. Again, it came in a little bit higher, so we are going to be transferring from the unemployment compensation to the risk managed, management insurance. And then, we have a number of departments, again, that need that little bit of extra help to get them to the end of the year, and that money is coming out of the Planning Clerical Secretary, I'm sorry, Administrative Assistant Position. I have signed it, we need the approval of the board, and then this will go before the Finance Committee.
Perfect, so moved. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. Weeks. All in favor? Five oh. Next thing on the agenda is Two Fifty-Two Lakeside Road Fence Installation. Ms. Green.
Okay, Mr. Chair, so, Mr. Olson, who is the resident and property owner of Two Fifty-Two Lakeside Road, brought a notice into our office that he will be extending a fence across the back property line. Now, the fence that he, that he's looking to install is going to encroach the roadway, part of Roller Coaster Road, and what this is going to do is it's going to hinder traffic, any type of traffic from traveling from Roller Coaster Road to Lakeside Road. Mr. Olson did put up a, some type of a blockade earlier in the year, or maybe in the fall of last year. Police and fire were not notified of it, and so he did remove it. But this is, again, this is his, he is notifying the town that he plans on doing this. I have forwarded this information to police and fire as well. This may create a hindrance for emergency responses, but again, I have town council here as well to talk on this. This is, now, these, these two roads are private roads, they are dirt roads, and there is issues with truck traffic. My, my, my concerns would be, say, if people purchase appliances, how are these going to be delivered if the, if the, this vehicle, the delivery truck is having trouble getting down the road? Amazon delivery trucks, UPS, FedEx. I, I just don't know if, if this is going to create a hindrance that would cause people to not be able to get these types of items delivered to their homes, as well as if any of these residents have private trash pickup? Again, if this would cause a hindrance to access to, to these two roads because of this fence that's in the, in the road.
Mr. Mitchell.
I have a question, does, does he own the property where he's putting the fence?
Oh, Kate, are you still there?
Yeah.
So, he, basically, the deeds on these properties show the property to the middle of the road. So, that's where it kind of gets a little complicated, as far as the town's right on a private road, and then a property owner's right on a private road, because the deeds go into the middle of these roads.
Right, but does he, Kate, does he own the property? I, I'm familiar with a private road, I live on a private road, but if, does the guy, does Mr. Olson own the property where the fence is going to go?
I, he's indicated that he's going to put it on his property. I want to caution the board, we have not done a title search, our firm hasn't done a title search, and roads are tricky, it depends when that road was laid up, is it an ancient road, and there are certain rights for dedication for older roads. Now, you have to follow a process that's statutory. So, I want to caution everyone that we have not made a legal determination that this is a private road by any stretch of imagination. But presuming it is a private road, it's my understanding, based on, based on his correspondence, that he's intended not unblocking somewhere else further down the street, but right along his property.
I think if it's on his property, we can't stop him.
But across the entire road? I'm just trying to visualize, because I'm, I was saying he's putting it across the entire road.
That's not what it says.
He's made, he's made his intention pretty clear that his goal is to stop traffic going through that road. So, I would take a hazard to guess, now, I don't, I haven't seen the barrier that he intends unveiling or anything like that, but I would take a hazard to guess that he's intending on blocking the entire stretch of that road. I can't say one way or the other. Perhaps if, if he goes only to his property line, which would run, if it's a private road, to the center, and then who's ever, whoever lives on the other side owns to the center to that point, he would only block half. Right? But the, to Kenny's point, this is, if it truly is a private road, a private dispute between property owners who live along that road, whether or not they have easement rights or the ability to pass and repass. I'm not going to opine on private property interest which does not involve the town, and nor have I even looked at the deeds to challenge that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hick.
Not that I want to do this to you two, but I think they should be tabled for a further meeting, until we can actually find out with the title search, with, you know, to make sure that he can actually put the fence up. I mean, I don't ever remember seeing anything like this come before us before.
It has, a couple, whether it was this past fall, or a couple, I think it was with, when we had Michael McHugh as the town administrator, because at one point, he wanted to put rocks across the road.
That's right.
And then, we appealed, saying that it was a hindrance to public safety.
Right, but it's the same gentleman that...
You're right.
Did that, is doing this.
Right.
And I understand it's a private road, but we just approved to have private, private roads graded. So, now, if a town truck can't get down there to pave the private road...
To grade it, yep.
Or, when they have to be plowed, you know, it's...
Took the words out of her mouth, because I think that's the biggest issue.
Yeah.
You put this on there, we can't grade the roads anymore.
Well, I don't know if I agree with Mr. You, Mr. Chair. So, Roller Coaster Road and Lakeside Road, they meet, like that. So, if he blocks the road, if you're coming down Lakeside, you come down Lakeside. If, if you're coming down Roller Coaster, you come down Roller Coaster. Those roads don't have to meet, so if you, if you have business on Lakeside, come down Lakeside. If you have business on Roller Coaster, then you come down Roller Coaster. You just made both those roads dead ends.
Yes, yes, but it is to...
It is what it is. If that's his property, he has the right to put a fence on there. Why would we spend money on titles and chasing this? If he owns a property, he put a fence up, and we have to deal with it. This is my opinion.
Ms. Kament?
So, I, I, I agree, it's private property. I am concerned about the powder keg that this is going to set off down there amongst neighbors. I'm also super concerned about our first responders, and, you know, if, you might have somebody new who doesn't know, you know, and then, and then they're going to have to reroute. I'm also concerned about the grading and the plowing, but at the end of the day, it is a private road. And I mean, I guess virtually anybody along there could decide that they were going to, going to, and then you'd have everybody blocking everything off.
I live on a private, I'm sorry. I live on a private, I'm sorry, I live on, there's six houses on my street, it's a dead-end road. So, same thing, if he puts a fence, then the fire department comes down Lakeside. If there's a fire on Lakeside, if there's a fire on the other road, on, then they come down Roller Coaster.
I guess my, my, my only question, Mr. Chair, that, that's what, was to Ms. Fedorov, do we have any obligation for the public safety and health of the remainder of the citizens that are on the private way to do anything? I don't wanna interfere with somebody's private, you know, rights on their private property, I've got no interest in that whatsoever, but I'm thinking of greater good, and I'm trying to figure out, do we have some kind of a responsibility?
Do you have a legal obligation to ensure that a private road remains open? It's not an affirmative obligation, I would suggest to you. Is there a discretionary ability to do that? There may be, but I would prefer to discuss that in executive session, because it would involve something more extensive than I would wanna discuss in open session.
Fair enough, thank you.
So I think, I think at this time, Mr. Hickey is right that this has to come back before the board with more information.
Yep.
So.
So we'll postpone for executive session and more info.
Yep.
The only thing is, you might wanna do it pretty quick, 'cause it looks like the fence is going in on, what's the date?
June first.
June first.
So.
So we'll have to have you two come back then, before June first.
I'd be happy to.
So, I'm through you to Ms. Green. So, Ms. Green, that means that this needs to be on executive session for the, the fourteenth, because we won't be meeting prior to June first. That's the fir, that's the last meeting prior to June first for us.
The fourteenth?
Yes.
Yes, we're not scheduled to meet until-
The fourteenth.
Thursday first, but I mean-
Well, you, you do, you will be, you do have, you will be meeting me twenty-fourth.
Sorry, never mind, twenty-fourth, yeah. That's the, that's the meeting I was saying to put it on, was the twenty-fourth, I'm sorry, I don't know why I just said the fourteenth, I've gone back a week.
So, yeah, and, and I think right at the moment, too, this particular incident, this particular agenda item is, has very little impact to the overall society of Lakeside Drive, 'cause as you said, you easily make this into two dead, dead ends. Now, if it was up on Woodman Terrace, and an individual at the beginning of the road wanted to put it up, then we have issues, 'cause you have other people's hindrance blocked, but with this one, it is what it is. So with that-
It'd be an inconvenience, but it is what it is, if it's his private property. We don't wanna get in the battle over residents, we got enough stuff to do.
So, with that being said, moving on to the next agenda item, recognize John Curry resignation from the Hanson Capital Improvement Committee.
So moved with regret.
With regret.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Five oh. Recognize Deana Amato from resignation from Hanson Capital Improvement Committee.
So moved. With regret.
With regret. All in favor? Five oh. And then one thing that is not posted on here, I just wanted to recognize Timothy C. Woodward, Jr. The Town of Hanson wishes to recognize you for all your hard work in achieving Eagle Scout rank from the Boy Scouts of America, with help from your fellow scout members, friends, families. Your Eagle Scout project included clearing bush, brush, and trash from a one-mile section of the Poor Meadow Conservation Area walking trail. So with that being said, I just wanted to recognize him in our meeting. One of us from the board will be at his Eagle, Eagle Scout, Eagle Scout Citation Ceremony, but we did sign it and created an official citation for him, so thank you very much to Mr. Woodward. With that being said, I-
Can we just jump back to the Capital Improvement Committee really quick?
Yes, sir.
So with the two resignations that just came in, it basically leaves the Capital Improvement Committee without a quorum? It's basically dismantled at this point. Can we put on the next agenda how we plan to remedy that? Because that has larger consequences for town meeting, matrix, basically all capital planning moving forward. I think as of right now, there's only two members, one of them is me. So, we have to figure out what that means from a bylaws perspective, and how, kind of how we keep the town moving with that.
Great.
Please, thank you.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve one-day liquor licenses as approved, as printed on the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? And then, looking for a motion to approve open session minutes from April fifth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Five oh. And Town Administrators' report, Ms. Green.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Well, first and foremost, again, I'd like to thank everybody who worked very, very hard for preparation of town meeting. A lot of work goes into it, and a lot of departments put in a lot of hard work, a lot of hard hours, so I just wanna recognize everyone for town meeting. That's our big show for the, for the year, biggest show, and everybody deserves a lot of kudos and bravo for town meeting. Secondly, I'd like to give you an update on the D-Regionalization Financial Impact Study. So, TMS is compiling the material that they have, they're putting their report together, and they will let me know when it's ready, and then they'll be placed on an agenda very close to the future, so they can present the findings on the financial impact. One-stop Grant Program update, so I'd like to thank our town planner for taking the lead on preparing the thirty-nine-page grant applications for each individual grant. We've got two of those completed and submitted, which is the Hoxav Brownfields Investigation and the Master Plan Update. Again, that, that is a, a group effort, a team effort, to prepare these grant applications and get them in, but our town planner, Tony De Freas, is taking the lead on that and doing a great job. And I am, as far as an update on the Whitman Hanson Regional School District Audit, there was a meeting with the Collins Center that we held, and basically just waiting on the Town Administrator to respond. We, the Collins Center was gonna put together a proposal and submit it, and I, I'm still waiting on a response from the Town Administrator, Whitman Town Administrator, on where we stand with that. And last Thursday, attended the Mass Municipal Human Resources one oh one boot camp. Very informative boot camp, training session meetings, and what it does is it, it goes over everything human resources-related. We get legislative updates, we learned how to prepare for a human resources audit, which a state agency can come in at any time. So, a lot of focus has gonna, is gonna be concentrating on really tightening up our human resources as far as documents required for our employees and things like that. They also had a presentation on diversity, equity, and inclusion in the workplace. Again, very informative information, and it's very beneficial to attend these, because you really learn what's going on out there with other towns, how they're, how they're dealing with human resource issues, what they're doing, and I know that, we've talked about positions in our office that could help us out, and I think it's really important, after attending this boot camp, that we really think about a dedicated human resources. I think we're one of the only towns in the Commonwealth that do not have a dedicated human resources position. And when you have a person that is doing human resources and many, many other things, which, with each individual responsibility and job, job tasks, there's many that fall underneath that, and there's so many requirements with human resources and personnel that I fear that, I hope that something's not missed, 'cause you do have deadlines and filing requirements and things like that. So, we are working on really making our human resources sufficient, but maybe ask the board, future boards, to think about a human resources position in the town hall, it's crucial. And I do wanna announce, so Juneteenth, new holiday, that was state, is, is a state and a federal holiday. This year, Juneteenth, which was actually, is actually June nineteenth, which is Sunday, falls on a Monday. So June twentieth, the town hall will be closed to celebrate and acknowledge Juneteenth holiday. And also, too, would just like to recognize Selectmen Mitchell, Selectmen Chairman, Dyer, I'm sorry, for the years of service, this is their last meeting with us, I'm gonna miss them. They're great, great people to have on the board, very knowledgeable, very dedicated. A great big thank you from me, for allowing me to, this opportunity to join the Town of Hanson, I've loved every day since. And last but not least, liquor licenses. So, at the October special town meeting, the town meeting voted to go, move forward with special legislation to allow the Town Administrator the ability to authorize one-day liquor licenses. Well, we did put this before special legislation. Unfortunately, the news is not good on this. Other towns have tried this and have failed. The committee that this is before does not, they're not in favor of relinquishing this type of authority from the local licensing authority, which is the Board of Selectmen. So, as it stands right now, the Board of Selectmen will continue to have one-day licenses on the agendas for their authorization. And that's my Town Administrator report for today.
And, Mr. Chair, I would like to thank you, Mr. Dyer and Mr. Mitchell. It's been a pleasure serving with you guys, we've had some good times, it's a bad times, but overall, I'll look back on it fondly, and I hope you guys will, too.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, any last words before we go into executive session?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. So I just wanna say thank you very much to the Town of Hanson for the, for, for the ability to serve in this role in the town. And thank you very much to everyone in the town over the past four years, and thank you.
I love you guys! So.
I miss you so much.
All right, I am looking for a motion to enter into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one A, Exemption Two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Exemption Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares to wit treasurer, collector, and parental leave. Roll call, vote, Mr. Weeks.
Aye.
Miss, oh, well, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Move, move and seconded, thank you. Roll call, vote, Mr. Weeks.
Aye.
Ms. Kimmel?
Aye.
Myself, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now in executive session, thank you very much.